Good morning, everyone. Tuesday, 9:30. I'd like to begin the Midachonite Commissioners' meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we have minutes of January 18th.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, all right. We have with us the Health Commissioner, Krista Wasowski. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me this morning.
Sure.
Just wanted to take a few moments. I wanted to thank you on behalf of the Board of Health for placing the levy hopefully this morning by resolution onto the ballot in front of the voters. I wanted to just take a few moments, you know, the health levy, this has been on the books for 30 years. It was renewed in 2002, was renewed in 2012. It is a base funding for our agency. It's something that's very much needed. It's core funding, and it's very critical to our operation. So we, as you know, are not county-funded. We're not a county. We work very, very closely with you, but we are not a county agency, nor are we an agency of the state. A lot of people believe that to be the case as well. Last year, we received $86,000 in total from the state in funding that we could use to run our operation, which certainly is not viable. We're 31% levy-funded. I just wanted to remind everyone here and everyone who's watching the Commissioners' meeting this morning to understand that we do leverage, we have fees, we have grants, we have contracts. We do a lot of work so that we have to rely very little, as little as we can, on our local taxpayer funding. So it is, we do have a renewal, and that's to continue to have the state portion of that money paid for. It's taxpayer relief. It was important to us to do what we could to minimize anything that we are asking locally. The .15 increase, though, is a reflection on what we need, we know, in the next 10 years because it is a 10-year levy. And some of those costs that have increased, that have changed in the last 30 years, there's that levy. Technology, the cost of computers and firewalls and everything that you need to have a compliant, to keep information protected. There's a cost to that. We also, we're in Northeast Ohio, and as a facility that hires medical professionals, we have to compete with the entire Northeast Ohio market for the people that we have working for the health of our own community. So there's that. That is an increased cost. And then lastly, this is a major change that we've had within the state. We now, in order to pull in grants from the state, we have to front that money for three months before we can request reimbursement for those first three months. So it's been a double-edged sword for us. We've worked really hard to bring in funding, federal funding and state funding, to offset the costs for programming that we know that we need in our community, but at the same time, that's tied up over a million dollars for us in funds that we can't use. We have to have that available to pull down and be able to draw those grants. So I just wanted to just make those few comments for you. I know you're very well-versed on the Health Department. I appreciate the time that you've given me this morning to be able to talk to everyone else out there about the health levy a little bit. So, thank you.
It is important that the levy succeed, so we would very much like to-
It is.
... see it for the viability of our-
Yes.
And over the last two years, the Health Department has certainly earned its keep.
You know, people relied on the Health Department for information and certainly for now vaccination. And unfortunately, kind of with the climate of everything that's happening in the world and the uncertainty of the pandemic that we're just coming out of, just that steadiness of, here's what's happening locally, and we were able to pull and talk about what's happening here and to help make decisions with our businesses and with others for here. And so that's been something, you know, I had mentioned this morning when I came in early that that is one of the things that, as a result of all of this, people do know they have a Health Department. I'm not so sure they would have necessarily known that in the past. So, yeah, not the way I'd want people to learn about the Health Department for sure, but I'm really glad that we've been here for our community.
So it comes down to you haven't had an increase in mileage for 30 years.
Yes.
And it'll be the first that you've asked actually for an increase.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
All right. Next item on the agenda, public comments regarding pending resolution. Anyone here want to speak about any of our pending resolutions? If not, go ahead. We've actually, let me see, got County Highway Engineers Office, Dan Becker for Andy Conrad.
Good morning. You changing things up on me?
Morning, Dan.
Yeah, yeah.
Got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is accepting and awarding the bid for the 2022 Medina County Highway Department hot mix bid. And the second resolution is authorizing Medina County Engineer to issue a permit allowing existing personal property fixtures to occupy a portion of the home roads right away. And then we have the weekend permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussions?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
The second resolution about the personal property in the public right-of-way, it says there are 10 properties.
Yes.
And in our resolution, we have, we have one letter in here and photos of a flowerbed. You know anything about the other nine?
No, I can find out about that bill and I'll let you know.
Okay.
They didn't tell me anything about that. They told me the one was approved and that's the letter that you have.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So.
So as far as you know, Dan, none of them are mailboxes that are hard structures in the right-of-way?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And mailboxes aren't a good subject right now with all the snow, so.
So you've taken them all out there? You don't have to worry about it.
We helped a few people, but we're a lot more.
All right, very good.
So pretty much the intent, largely, these are landscaping-
That is correct.
-when it comes down to. So they're low impact, they would have minimal impact on the occupants as well as the vehicles themselves.
That's correct. I just didn't, I'll check to know if they're-
They're not safety issues. I just want to make sure.
Okay, let them make it clear. All right.
We're good.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I-
She did.
Oh, yeah, I did. Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Moved in second. Any other further discussion, sir? Okay, roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. All right, Jeremy Sinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Jones and Henry Engineering for professional design services. This is for pre-design services over at the Boston Road Pump Station Replacement Project. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter an agreement with GPD Group for professional design services for the solid waste district's residential campus. This is for some soil borings and construction administration.
I make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing-
I just want to say thank you for sending the fixtures of the restoration work on the Bank of the River.
Columbia Road there?
Oh, yeah.
It was interesting to see the track sitting in the middle of the river.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yes.
I'm gonna try and get some, see if I can talk to the contractor to be able to drive some of those.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that's a good idea, but.
We're trying to save the line, Jeremy.
Tough crowd.
Okay. A roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, all right, very good.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy, all right. Holly Muirin, Human Resources Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary and one in finance, six rate increases, one at County Home, one at Human Resources, one at Office for All the Adults, and three in sanitary. One leave of absence at County Home, two resignations, one in transit and one in Office for All the Adults.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? One of the new employees, Nels Swanson, is here, and welcome aboard. Glad you're joining us from the private sector and coming in, using your talents to help us here for the public service. So, any other discussion?
Welcome.
Yeah, roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, I guess you're official now, so.
Thanks, Holly.
Very good, thanks. Denise Testa, Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for your consideration declaring all unincorporated areas of Medina County as restricted for utility-scale power projects for Senate Bill 52, the Wind and Solar Electric Generation Siding Authority. So this has been a long time coming.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussions? Just point out that originally we had received a correspondence from Granger Township indicating that they did not want to be included in this, having met with them, first Denise and then myself last week, and discussion, a bit of discussion and difference of opinion within the township, but the Board of Trustees agreed with us that they would like to continue to be included in this exclusionary zone. I'd point out that I think there was an OSU study that was released saying there's, in the future, with the near term, there's going to be over 750,000 projects composing about 750,000 megawatts going on here in the next number of years in solar energy. And when you're talking about these applies to 50 megawatts, that's a lot of big projects that they're being planned for. So I think clearly Medina County, what we're saying is we're not opposed to solar. But you have something of that scale, you need to discuss it with Township Trustees, you need to discuss it and present it to the public as well as the Board of Commissioners, but also work with our County Planning Commission in making sure that it does fit within the community and the future plans of our community.
I think the resolution that we're doing encourages discussion down the line.
Indeed.
Agreed.
All right, a roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Denise.
Thanks, Denise.
Let's see, Amy Lyon-Gavin, our Assistant County Administrator. What do we got?
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have nine resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is a revenue adjustment for a fund. The third is authorizing a cash transfer for the Medina County Emergency Management Agency. The fourth is a cash transfer for a fund. The fifth is proceeding with the submission of the question of levying a renewal tax with an increase in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of meeting the expenses of the Medina County Combined General Health District program to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the district and to provide the Board of Health with sufficient funds to carry out such health programs pursuant to the ORC and to place this on the May 3, 2022 ballot. The sixth resolution is authorizing an agreement with STEP CG LLC for network core refresh. The seventh is authorizing a contract with Liturgical Publications Incorporated for publishing services for OOA. The eighth is allowing expenses of county officials. And the ninth and final finance resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $1,789,499.61.
I'll make a motion to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussions? As we heard previously with our Health Director's plea, the public, please consider the impact of this levy that'll be on the ballot, presuming the May 3 will be maintained and don't have to move a primary because of all the differences of opinion on what our district boundaries ought to look like for congressional as well as House and Senate. But regardless, whenever it appears on the ballot, we do hope that the public do consider it, hear their story, understand the impact of not having this money can be very detrimental to the public health and the safety of many of individuals in this county. So with that, roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes.
And if I may, just a quick point out here that whenever Shannon gets up to do his Transit Director update, he has with him two representatives from OHM to provide an update on their strategic planning process. So if you wanted to keep him next or have him after Debbie or Stacy, I would defer to you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, thank you.
So now you know what you're in for when you have to do the presentation of the resolution.
All right, we do have two Commissioners' resolutions. One is honoring former Medina County Veteran Services Commissioner Randall Schmidt for his years of service. Second, also appointing a representative and alternates to the Medina County Planning Commission. Medina City's Representative Jessica Hazeltime, Village Mayor's Matthew Sturgeon, Medina County Township Association Chris Colina, and Medina County Township Association Darrell Albrecht.
Make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I would like to add one comment to the resolution for Randy Schmidt. And I'm surprised it doesn't say this, he's a Marine Corps veteran and is a Marine and has been very, very active in all Marine Corps activities here in Manah County for a lot of years. I mean, it seems like any event that I have gone to that is military-related, he's there.
Yeah.
Representing the Marine Corps and Veteran Service Commission. So I just say thank you for Randy, to Randy for all of his service over the years. And unfortunately, I'll be out of town and won't be able to attend the event, but congratulations and thank you for your service.
Sure. Amen. I've been on Thursday. I'm obviously going to be there. Likewise, it doesn't mention he has served us on our County Home Advisory Council for many years. But no, he is obviously one of the best in Medina County. And he served his country and has served Medina County well, and he'll be missed on the Veteran Services Commission indeed. So, a roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, all right. That's our resolution, so department updates and introduce Shannon. And then you can introduce your guests and- Okay, sure, sure.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jen.
Our monthly update for December, obviously, you know, it was a very cold month. Ridership did maintain. I have some yearly numbers for, just to mention if you have any questions on how we did year-over-year from 2021. Maintained costs well. We positioned ourselves pretty well for what these two gentlemen are going to talk about when it comes to financial. We met our budget this last year. We had a little overage with fuel. We budgeted and came, we projected to be about $58,000 over because of the increase of price in fuel. We made up some of that, and I believe we're in a better position. Yesterday, we, next year, we made some adjustments to our per mile cost for some of our agencies, which was approved. It'll help us make up about two-thirds of that. So we're in pretty good position there. Year-over-year, just wanted to mention some to wrap up the year. Again, the budget was in good shape. We met it, other than that fuel and a couple other things. But our loop miles and we maintain our loop miles and our flex miles. We're doing business pretty much as usual and maintaining that service throughout the year. We did have a few staffing challenges, but with HR's help and support, we've been able to maintain by hiring a few drivers at a time, which we have a couple in the pipeline right now. I'll take an opportunity just to say this agency, the company, OHM, we went through the procurement process and they did a really good job of, you know, I remember Scott something, Scott said, he said this, they really know Medina, and I've been a part of that Medina County. I've been a part of it with the city with them, so I saw it firsthand, I'm seeing it firsthand, so I'm excited about introducing Jason and Arthur if you want to come up and-
Please.
Provide a presentation, a quick minute update.
Thanks for having us, Commissioners. Definitely appreciate it today. Arthur's handing out just a couple pages to let you see the overview of what we're thinking about. We won't go into gory detail, but want to give you some background information so you're familiar with how the process is going to work. Again, I'm Jason Sued, and I'm a principal with OHM Advisors. Arthur is a senior planner and project manager. I'll let him talk a little bit more about our experience here in the county. In the large sense, we do a lot of transit work in addition to planning, landscape architecture, design, and engineering. We have about 17 offices throughout the region. That includes an office in Cleveland and Akron and in Columbus. So we're very local and we're constantly in and around the area, and I'll let Arthur tell you a little bit about the work he's recently been doing here in the county.
So thank you. Appreciate it this morning. Arthur Schmidt, as Jason mentioned, I'm actually Medina County resident, live in the city of Brunswick. As Jason mentioned before, we've done a lot of work in Medina County and with the city of Medina. We've done a previous downtown plan, housing study. We're currently in the midst of, as Shannon was mentioning, four, and as Denise is a part of as well, a comprehensive plan update for the city of Medina. And we worked with several of the townships in the area and villages as well. So very excited to continue to work in the county, both professionally and personally, as a resident. And so I'll head back to Jason to talk about our strategy.
Great, thanks.
Super good.
Thank you. What we've done, and please interrupt me if you have any questions, is outline this into general four phases of an approach as you see on that one page that's labeled "process." And it's fitting into an overall schedule that is intended to take throughout this year. What we would like to do is have the opportunity to really do the outreach we need to do at the same time as we're understanding the existing conditions that are in place now. We've already met with staff, you know, Shannon's been great, setting us up with the background information that we need, and we've already begun the analysis. But what we're going to be doing throughout that process is understanding the opportunities that exist for the transit system here, understanding the growth and changes that are inherent throughout the county, and thinking about the ways that new technology and existing service can merge in order to provide a wider net of opportunity for everyone. One of the exciting things about transit right now is that we are in a bit of a transition where we do have new technologies coming on in mobility and moving people about in a variety of ways. And we're hoping to parlay that into understanding the different nature of the way that transit can work to service the widest space of the community here. In addition, what we're going to do is come up with a funding and implementation strategy so that there's a clear-cut plan. You have an advantage of having a really great staff here who is extremely targeted and directed on getting things done. One of the things that we love to see in a project is the opportunity to have an extremely short implementation cycle along with a long-term vision. We're confident that when this is done, it will not languish, and the ideas that we collaboratively come up with as a community and with your great staff will be implemented and we'll see some exciting changes. I will answer any questions. I just real quickly want to have Arthur talk to you about how we're going to go about this outreach because I know a lot of times people are wondering how they can get involved or be part of the larger collaborative process.
Thanks, Jason. So again, as you see on both the process page with that Phase 3 listening to stakeholders, and probably better viewed on our schedule, that Phase 3 is basically the entirety of the project. So we're going to be constantly engaging not only with the county communities, but as well as the stakeholders throughout this process. We're working with Shannon and his staff, along with ourselves, to create a robust steering committee that's going to have representation throughout the county. We're looking to add transit riders, representation to that steering committee so that way we can hear the voice of those who are using the transit services currently. We're also aiming to include youth into the steering committee because we want to understand, and we've been doing this in our comprehensive planning for the city of Medina, want to understand the younger generation in the county, what their needs are, their view on transit, and how that can kind of shape and mold the future for the strategic plan. The ways we're going to be reaching out, we're going to be doing kind of several different rounds. There'll be strategic stakeholder conversations that we have one-on-one with direct stakeholders that are working with the county transit organization. We're going to also be putting out surveys, both digital and physical form, to make sure that we're reaching out to, again, not only the current riders, but future riders, and doing some other pop-ups and open houses where we can get feedback and then start to display our strategy moving forward to get additional feedback for refinement.
So if we have individuals watching this now that are interested, providing some input, their experiences and so forth, the best thing for them to do is contact you or through our office, you, Shannon, and kind of connect them up to the appropriate time for input in some of these activities. But we want to encourage them to do that.
That is correct. We need to make sure we communicate well to the community. And if we have a lot of stakeholders involved, we'll be cascading information out and pushing it out that way. But also, you know, our public meeting process of how we move the business forward needs to be met. We're going to talk greatly about that. Again, very engaged in what we're going to do from the community standpoint, which I'm very excited about. I get a lot of feedback. I can't wait to gather all the information from the major stakeholders and down to the minor, the younger generation, and I'm really excited about that process. So that's exactly correct. To contact our offices and/or, you know, we have our email address on our website. Obviously, they can reach out to our offices. We'll gather all their input that way. And these two gentlemen are very engaged in the community process.
Just one more thing I did want to add. You're not off the hook, if you noticed there.
Yeah, I know.
Couple dots on there.
I know.
So we will be coming back and we'll be looking for your input as well.
Well, I figure we're going to be on the hook either way. I just want to make sure that, but I am excited that you're involving the youth, individuals, especially for planning the future for transit. Having grown up here, transit wasn't really implied or understood and certainly didn't even exist in Medina County. And my only experience was at Kent State when I went for my undergrad. That's where I understood that public transit can actually work. As a student, you know, I had an idea it was cheap, and I parked my car, and then I traveled everywhere by that. And I just love that concept, that can work. But likewise, with the next generation, we want to make sure that we find a good way to kind of plug them in and that one of their choices will be public transit. And I think that speaks to the future planning efforts here. I think it does.
Jason, you mentioned alternative forms of transportation. So, and I don't know whether this fits or not, but would there be any consideration of the, the scooters and the different things that they've had in Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, and those sorts of alternatives from a public transportation standpoint?
Multimodal ideas are coming out of the city planning, I'm hearing it. I believe that could be part to complement transportation. We all, I've gotten questions about bikes, been part of bike discussions and that sort of thing. Larger metropolitan areas usually have Coda and Columbus partner with them, kind of part of that.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
Um, not sure if it could be. I think we could think of everything as far as what could complement our transportation. I think it'd be the yes and after we get this set, but I think it will be part of... And these two gentlemen are talking to the city about, you know, the park system and how they connect. So, that could be something we hear through the community.
Yeah, yeah.
And multimodal is a very popular word. Microtransit's another word.
Sure, right.
But I, I think some of that too, as you pointed out, a lot of the metropolitan areas, Coda was around when I was a legislator. Some of the presentation, autonomous vehicles and so forth, having that infrastructure. So, we're not going to be the first adopters. We're going to be the, like, the second and third adopters. But when you come to technology, I, I, it's better to have had not the first iPad, but like the second and the multiple generations afterwards. I'm just saying. So, I, I'm just thinking in terms of the technology, that stuff gets refined. And by then, we'll be in a place where we can actually maybe adopt of it, even as you point out, the micro, at a, at a smaller, a smaller level. Makes a lot more sense.
It remains to be seen, but I think that's the popular...
Yeah.
Joe, they're trying to build a smart highway from Columbus to Marysville.
Oh, yeah, yes, I know we...
Right, and, and, and in all the meetings that I was at down in Columbus where they talked about that, I was trying to get them to do it on Route 18. I said, you know, we have fiber going all the way down and, and it could be done.
All the way into Akron.
Right, exactly.
It could be, yeah. It's, it's a lot more capacity than, than I think we even have currently have. As I understand the infrastructure, but you have Honda plant, you also have that, the North America test track and so forth as part of that resource, and that's what they were looking for, for the studies that have done to evaluate and, and develop an autonomous vehicle that makes some sense. I heard that by, the story being is, one of their biggest problems was the traffic circles or for the...
The roundabouts.
The roundabouts. Is AI continues to want to stay in there. And so, that, one of their biggest problems is it doesn't want to, doesn't want to leave.
They need an extraction plan.
Yeah, exactly. So, I think, but those are the, like I said, those are the things that get developed first. We're going to be like the second and third. But I think that, that, that's much more frugal use of our dollars. But likewise, we'll have a young generation that will be looking for that. And I, I, I agree, we have the infrastructure in place with fiber to enable that to occur. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I also want to mention that there is a desire and a need for us to connect with our adjacent counties that, as you said, the U.K. President. But a NOACA collaboration will be done from this. It's one of my goals to make sure that we can speak in a, in a language of five-to-ten-year plan. It puts us in a position with what NOACA is thinking. We've had a lot of discussion about rail and things like that and how we get people in and out of the county for, for work, play, that sort of thing. So, we're going to, I'm, I'm really want to make sure we plug in and connect well and complement what NOACA is working on, so.
We're approximately to both, and especially the RTA in Cleveland and Strongsville and Brunswick. Likewise, as, can play a significant role for transportation needs, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Next, Debbie Kylie, job and family services director.
Good morning, David.
Good morning.
Jeremy and I were just talking that the sun is out, so, you know, it's four degrees outside. Uh, just to, I usually come and my department updates are a month review, but I figured I would do, since it's January, let's do a review of stuff in JFS land for 2021. So, the agency, from the eligibility perspective, we maintained at least ninety-nine, ninety-nine percent approval rating for SNAP cases. That's approving cases within thirty days for food benefits. We increased our data entry timeliness for initiation of investigation on abuse and neglects. The child support division was awarded best performance and support establishment by the state of Ohio. And then we also implemented several technology upgrades. The Cisco Jabber software, so that's where we're able to link our desktop phones to the workers' laptops. So, it's the laptop that's ringing, not actually the desktop phone. And that's for both in-office as well as remote workers. And that proved indispensable yesterday when we lost internet connection for the entire day. I was able to authorize workers to work from home and answer the agency phone at home. So, we were able to keep things... Are you back up? Yes, yes, as of like 3:30 yesterday.
Super.
Yep. Uh, we also redesigned the agency's website. So, we updated and upgraded links to different services and offerings. It's a far better user experience than our prior, our, our prior website, which was, which was pretty... Uh, we also purchased new software for foster care applications, adoption requests and data tracking. The prior system that we had in place was super antiquated. It was Excel spreadsheets, pen and paper, documentation, things like that. So, this software actually allows real-time access. So, as an individual is applying to be a foster parent, the workers can respond to those requests immediately. As soon as that application comes in, they can respond. Individuals applying for a foster care room for adoption can upload documents in real time and the worker gets them like that. So, it's going to improve our, hopefully, our timeliness in that perspective too. And a better experience for those people who are wanting to apply for foster parent and maybe some other barriers.
Do you still have a need for additional foster parent?
Always, yeah. We have, the statistics that I'll talk about in a little bit, we had forty-one in February of last year. We now have fifty-one, so it's ten more. But it's, it's less about the number and more about the who. We need foster parents that are willing to take children that I would say are between ten and eighteen years of age. Younger children are far easier to place. And a lot of times, those individuals that are ten through eighteen years of age come with maybe some more mental health and emotional things that, that are required to deal with. So, we were, we are actually allowing individuals to apply for foster, paying for those younger ages, but we're not going to do the home study because we have enough of that capacity. We really need individuals to step up for those older children. Also, with the amazing partnership with leadership Medina County and Blitz Studios, and two of our foster parents, Jason and Amy Sanders, we recorded a video following the process of foster parent licensure. Once again, trying to break down those barriers of foster parenting. A lot of preclusions are out there about, oh, I can't foster because I'm this, or I can't, I can't foster because I'm that. And Jason and Amy kind of had some of those preconceptions too. So, it was, it's a great video of us, they're not only, they were made to do this video. You'd think they were actors and they're not. They're just so natural in front of the camera and, and we were blessed to have them as foster parents. So, that video can actually be found on our agency's Facebook page. And we also, seemingly simple, but I felt it was important, we updated the JFS logo. We had a different one on the website, a different one on envelopes, a different one on letterhead. And I just looked at that one day and I was like, why, why are there nine different logos for JFS? So, I wanted to ensure that we are recognized as one agency providing support, protection and assistance. So, that's what we did there. And the statistics for 2021, in the eligibility division, we received over fifty-eight hundred applications for assistance. We issued over twenty-six million in SNAP food assistance benefits. And the total cash benefits that were issued were over nine-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars. And the average Medicaid recipient per month, I can't get a total that doesn't duplicate them per month. So, the average per month was twenty-five thousand recipients of Medicaid. In the child support division, we collected over twenty million in current support payments and collected over two million in past due payments. Unfortunately, that is only two million of over forty-one million dollars. That's past due. So, there's certainly work to be done in that area. The child protective division, we screened over nineteen hundred reports of abuse and neglect. And in 2021, we averaged eighty children in care. Twenty-five children were re-unified with their parents and six others were voluntarily adopted. And like I said earlier, we had forty-one foster homes in February of 2021 and we now have fifty-one. And I think that is just a, a great nod to the recruitment efforts at, at JFS.
Super.
Questions, Brian?
Great job, thank you for all the statistics.
Absolutely.
I'm sure Brian will be utilizing some of these in the newsletter if you haven't already, so, thank you.
Sorry, Brian.
All right. Stacy Malakar, board of disabilities.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good, good.
Thank you, Stacy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me here. I handed out to you, we created a 2021 annual report to kind of give you some highlights of what occurred, some accomplishments from 2021 at the board. Couple of things I want to point out in here, we served one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine people last year. And you'll see that of that, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight are children under the age of twenty-two and six-hundred-and-thirty-one adults over the age of twenty-two, which continues to support the trend of increasing the amount of people that we're going to be serving. It, it continues to grow. You'll see under there that we serve three-hundred-and-four children between the ages of zero and three for early intervention services. That's a seventeen percent increase from 2020, the year before. We work with over two-hundred-and-eighty-four agencies and organizations to provide services, to coordinate services for people with developmental disabilities. And we work with over ninety businesses locally in the county to help individuals find jobs and support them there. Last year, we spent five-point-eight million dollars on the Medicaid waiver match costs for the people that we serve. On the back, you'll notice we've highlighted we're starting our new strategic plan that we're very excited about. Again, we're going to be looking at community membership, life transitions and provider supports. The DSP crisis again is, is still very real and a high priority for us in working with providers on, you know, how do we support and continue to, to ensure that the people we serve have the supports they need.
So, DSP stands for direct service provider?
Yes, I'm sorry, the logo jar in there, yes, direct.
And, and what kind of, what kind of positions or folks are you looking for to fulfill those roles?
Sure. The private providers are looking for people that will provide day-to-day care. There's a big need for the folks that are in residential, you know, helping them come in, prepare them, get ready to go to work or their daily activities, providing personal health care. And then there's a, a group that needs to, that's needed to provide the day programming, to come in and provide instruction and supervision. There's a need for people to provide transportation so that people with developmental disabilities can get to their jobs, to their day programming, to places that they want to go. Those are very important and in high need. And, you know, again, those are the people, the boots on the ground that do the hard work that's not always glamorous or, you know, high-paying jobs.
So, if somebody were interested in applying for this sort of role, how would they do it?
They, there's a couple of ways they can do it. They certainly can go and, and talk with individual providers, but they can also go to our county website, our board website. And there are a, a place on there where we can connect them with the different providers to apply for jobs. You know, we'll, we'll connect them and help them connect with where there's any...
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, good question. The other thing I would like to share with you is, in January, the 10th and 11th, we had the department, state department of developmental disabilities come down for our accreditation. And I'm very pleased to announce that we received the highest accreditation, three-year accreditation. We had no citations. They were very complimentary of, of the staff and how we put individuals first. Again, it was very clear that we're person-centered. We heard that last year when we got our three-year CARF accreditation, that we're person-centered. So, it was really refreshing to hear that. And they looked at our early intervention services, they looked at our community employment, they looked at our support and services administration. They looked at, you know, of course, our general administration and policies and finances. And it's a very thorough, a thorough accreditation, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're very excited about that. The other thing that we're excited about, we just received a grant from DODD to do some programming for multi-system youth. So, they had several million dollars out there throughout the state and we were fortunate to be chosen for about twenty-five thousand dollars to get us started into finding some solutions for these tougher-to-serve youth, you know, for residential, day supports. So, we'll be digging deep into that, seeing where we can grow and provide those supports.
Excellent, very good.
Any questions?
You, we have a board opening on your board?
Yes.
And I believe the deadline, Shannon had, Bronda had sent Shannon the notification a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
I believe the deadline for applications is tomorrow.
Yes, it is. So, yep, if anybody's interested.
Excellent.
I'd be glad to answer questions for people if they want to know a little more about what that requires.
Super.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy.
Appreciate it. Now, open up to a public comment. Anyone from the general public don't believe so? If not, go ahead and open up discussion session. Scott?
Good morning.
Good morning. Scott, good morning.
First, I'd like to give you a, just a quick update on the courthouse. And I, Ross, as you know, we were having some difficulties with Columbia Gas. And I would just like to thank Bethany Detler and Kevin Lotigan for assisting us and getting us in contact with the right people at Columbia Gas so we could schedule a meeting. So, gas signs instead of being installed in July after our infrastructure's in place, it should be installed in March. So, that's a good thing. We've met with WB Mason. We're going to use them to design the furniture layout. They are currently meeting with the courts, clerk of courts and adult probation to see what exactly is needed. And the architect had an initial plan. So, they're just kind of confirming that the way that the architect has it laid out is, is what is required, what they need. And then they will come back and we'll be purchasing the furniture off of probably state bid or some other purchasing pool. NV5, who's our move consultants, they are also in the process of meeting with the courts to determine what, what files need to be moved. Can we reuse the, some of the currently high-density filing systems that are over there and just get those moved over to the new courthouse? We don't have to expend funds for those, for those types of equipment, for that type of equipment. Also, as you see, the steel is going up. They are currently in phase two of, I believe, four phases of installing the steel. They just received another load yesterday, so I'm sure they're putting it up today. I know the snow kind of slowed them down a little bit, but they were out yesterday.
They were out this morning.
Yeah, yeah, I walked over yesterday and it's snowing, blowing and just, you know, nasty weather and some guys climbing a probably a fifty-foot ladder under the steel. There's no way. But, so, things are moving forward and we are still on schedule. I did have a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about. We've had a couple of requests for, actually for an easement on West Smith Road. As you know, the city will be doing a project on West Smith and they need a temporary easement there by the fairgrounds to, to do the work. Probably in 2023 is when the work will be performed. They have assured me that the West Smith will be open during fair week, so there shouldn't be interference there. We also have a request, there is a property where we have a, an easement for a radio tower. The easement is actually from 1968. I talked to Alan Close of Cleveland Communications yesterday, who handles our radio system. He said the property probably isn't, the, this easement probably is of no value to us. We have our Remsen Road Tower about one and a half miles away. This is only for a ninety-foot tower and he said that's probably not enough for that area. So, the request is that the easement be removed so that the property can be sold. So, the request I have is, one, are you okay with us granting an easement to the city for the property on West Smith? And two, are you okay with us removing the easement on, close to the, what, 94271 intersection?
I'm okay with both of them.
Oh, yeah, me too, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and draw a resolution to get those on for next week then.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, good. Amy, you have anything? All right, Jeremy? Krista, did you want to, okay. Shannon, all right. Anybody else? Bill?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, NOACA had a board meeting on Friday of last week. And the roundabout at 162 in River Stick has been approved. And there's two million dollars coming from NOACA to, to assist in the funding of that. I believe it's going to be done sometime in 2023, but it is moving forward. And then just the other thing I think is, is a very interesting win for the state of Ohio is the Intel Plant down in New Albany.
Yes.
I, I did a, a quick MapQuest search, it's eighty-eight miles from here...
Licking County, right?
Here to, to New Albany. And so, it's within a, a... And so it's within a reasonable distance of for folks to get to. And it should be a fantastic win for the state of Ohio.
Three thousand jobs.
Yes, three thousand production jobs and then seven thousand construction or ancillary jobs that will be created.
I saw the average salary is about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
There's going to be like a sucking sound of demand for for people.
Right.
Down there, just and we're having to do more to keep our people here and keep them attracted to northeast Ohio and Medina.
Well, three thousand new permit jobs, just even think about the new homes that are, and permits that'll be needed.
Yes, and then all the people that construct all those new homes and service all the wands and houses. It's a huge win for the state.
Game-changing. Oh, yeah, indeed, indeed.
That's all I have.
Colleen?
Just wanted to thank Jeremy. He gave me an update this morning on our Heather Hodge property for EMA. He will be going out to bid soon to move their sanitary line. Thank you.
Super, all right, very good. All right, anything else?
Want to report David Carrato and I, Port Authority with Medina Bank High Fiber, Litchfield Township yesterday, they approved the memorandum of understanding and also the approval of their donation or their contribution to the project using ARPA dollars. But the request was unanimous. We're expecting, I understand from Tom Siegel with Homer Township, they'll be acting on theirs. So we'll continue to communicate a movement forward in this partnership and with the expansion of fiber out to the, well, throughout the underserved area of the county, which is pretty sizable. So I want to thank him for doing that. The other item I brought in, I wanted to bring up was broadband access Ohio. It's an association that's formed largely of entities such as themselves, public entities that have public networks with community services such as that. And the County Commissioners Association of Ohio has joined, is joining as a a member of this association, as a voting member of the association. I think the levels was fifteen hundred if I recall correctly, as on the Board of Directors. It looks like Summit County likewise has joined, Summit County themselves. There are some of the other, the municipalities that likewise. I talked to David Carrato. He is already joining as a general information non-voting member. I'm proposing that the Board of County Commissioners vote at that level that we we at least consider joining them at a fifteen-hundred-dollar level, which makes us on the Board of Directors and obviously be as a voting member of the association. The idea is this bringing the political power and authority and the public entities involved in broadband expansion and in these kind of services to kind of counterbalance the corporate influences at the state level and advocate, as we saw what happened during the budgeting process, there was an amendment that had been placed on legislation that would have actually prohibited us from being able to expand our services. And that's going to be a constant battle. And I think this association has been formed to make sure that we have a presence at the State House in advocating for public broadband.
Well, on on behalf of the residents of Medina County, I would like a vote. I would like to be a voting member.
Yeah.
I I agree. I I think that, but my my question, Steve, is this is, this is an association of governmental entities that are advancing broadband. It is not a, this is a question, not a statement. It is not a amalgamation of both private providers and government. Is that fair to say?
There are some private providers, such as, well, obviously David Carrato working as an employee, but obviously I don't know the full membership. There are some internet provider services that are corporate that are not part of, I'll just say, the big telecom. In other words, AT&amp;T's not going to be a member, Spectrum's not going to be a member, Armstrong's not going to be a member. It's going to be the small internet provider services that contract and actually provide services within.
That need access through the fiber networks that the others have ever mentioned companies.
That's correct.
And control.
That's correct. And that that's the intent, is to advocate for the smaller entities that are out there that are working within the public sector, that have and own these type of, well, fiber facilities.
That are looking for a neutral platform that they can provide service on.
Right.
Like the Medina County forever network.
Exactly right, exactly right. So that's that's the intent of it. I think it's it's been missing at the at the table, and I'm glad it's organized. And I think I presume that you agree that we ought to join as a as a voting member.
Yes.
Okay. As I say, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So at this point, I'd rather us be at the table. So, okay, with that, we'll go ahead and proceed, get more information to you and make probably whatever official action we need to take to join. So I appreciate your support on that. I've got nothing else. We do have a request for executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the compensation of a public employee and to discuss imminent litigation.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. We do have an eleven o'clock hearing, a special commissioners' meeting, a hearing for application for a waiver from a designation requirements as part of our solid waste policy. That will be publicly broadcast and likewise recorded. So but other than that, we'll be taking no action. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 60 61 62 61 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 110 112 114 116 118 120 122 124 126 128 130 132 134 136 139 132 133 135 138 141 143 145 147 151 153 155 158 161 163 165 168 171 173 175 178 181 183 185 188 191 193 195 198 200 202 204 206 208 210 212 214 216 219 221 223 225 228 232 233 235 238 241 243 245 248 251 253 255 258 261 263 265 268 271 273 275 278 281 283 285 288 290 293 295 298 300 302 304 306 308 310 313 315 318 322 323 325 327 329 331 333 335 338 340 342 343 345 348 351 353 355 358 360 363 365 368 371 373 376 379 382 384 388 390 391 393 395 398 400 402 404 406 408 410 412 414 416 418 420 422 424 426 429 431 433 435 438 440 443 445 448 451 453 455 458 460 463 465 468 471 473 475 478 480 483 485 488 491 493 495 498 500 502 504 506 508 510 512 514 516 518 520 522 524 528 532 533 535 538 540 543 545 548 550 553 555 558 560 563 565 568 571 573 575 578 580 583 585 588 590 593 595 598 599 500 505 508 510 512 514 516 519 520 521 525 528 530 533 535 538 540 543 545 548 550 553 555 558 560 561 565 568 570 573 575 578 580 583 585 588 590 593 595 598 600 603 605 608 610 611 615 618 620 622 624 626 629 631 633 635 638 640 643 646 649 651 655 658 660 663 665 668 670 673 675 678 680 682 685 688 690 693 695 698 700 701 705 708 710 713 715 718 720 723 725 728 730 733 735 738 740 743 745 748 750 753 755 758 760 763 765 768 770 773 775 778 780 783 785 788 790 793 795 798 800 803 805 808 810 813 815 818 820 823 825 828 830 832 834 836 839 841 843 845 848 850 853 855 858 860 863 865 868 870 873 875 878 880 883 885 888 890 893 895 898 900 903 905 908 910 912 915 918 920 923 925 928 930 933 935 938 940 943 945 948 950 953 955 958 960 963 965 968 970 973 975 978 980 983 985 988 990 993 995 998 1000 1003 1005 1008 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1031 1033 1034 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1043 1045 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1060 150 154 156 158 159 161 162 163 164 165 166 168 169 164 166 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 178 179 173 175 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 188 189 190 191 192 150 160 163 165 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 188 189 190 191 192 193 160 163 165 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 170 172 173 174 175 176